Twenty-five. Our regular telephonic meeting of the Connecticut State Elections Enforcement Commission is called to order. My name is Steve Penny, Chair of the Commission, and I'd like to welcome you to today's meeting. This meeting is being conducted virtually in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, which authorizes public agencies to conduct meetings in this format. Meeting is being recorded for on-demand viewing and will be available for at least forty-five days. Because of the virtual format of this meeting, there are some special rules and procedures that I need to cover before we begin. First, all participants must mute their devices when they are not speaking. Second, all speakers must make a good faith effort to state the speaker's name and title at the outset of each occasion that such speaker participates in the meeting. Third, all votes must be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. And with that, I will ask the other commissioners and the interim executive director to introduce themselves.
Commissioner Michael Lojello.
Commissioner Shannon Burquist.
Greg Piatzou, Commissioner.
Interim Executive Director and General Counsel Claire Kendall.
Thank you, and for the benefit of the record, we do have a quorum present. And with that, we will proceed. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of May twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Are there any additions or corrections to be made to those minutes? None appearing as our motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
So moved, Commissioner Lojello.
Second, Piatzou.
We've been seconded in any discussion. And appearing those in favor of approving the minutes of May twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five as presented will raise their hands and or say aye.
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 I will abstain, Steve, because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, so right now I got one aye.
There's an aye.
Two ayes, but one for these purposes.
Three, aye.
Yeah, we got, we got three.
Thank you, okay. The motion carries with three in favor, none opposed, and one abstention. Approval of the minutes of April nine, two thousand twenty-five is next on the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to be made to those minutes? None appearing is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved, Commissioner Lojello.
Second, Piatzou.
Been seconded in any discussion. None appearing those in favor of adoption of the minutes of April nine, two thousand twenty-five as presented will raise their hands and or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, none appearing the motion, the minutes are approved with four voting in favor and none opposed, no abstentions. All right, next item on the agenda is reports by the interim executive director on administrative issues. Interim Director Kendall.
All right, thank you. Um, there's a lot to talk about, but I think the major one is that the fiftieth anniversary of the agency's operations and the twentieth anniversary of the CEP was a great success. Thank you all for attending. We got very good feedback, we obviously got very good press on, um, you know, a real boost to the staff as well. But I think that it was a great event and we really appreciate you guys being there. We also, you should know that the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities has approved our affirmative action plan for the next two years. And so we are, all is right with our, with our affirmative action plan and with CHRO. We will have, we had a brief audit lottery a month ago, and we're going to have one more coming up the end of June. The one at the end of June will be at the Legislative Office Building. It will be public, um, and we will have folks be able to come in and see this. It's a, it's a pretty small lottery, um, but at least people, you know, A, it does two things. It gives us a opportunity to do a test run through the logistics. And then when we have to do other lotteries, it'll make it all the much easier. But all lotteries going forward, we intend to have to be, um, as, uh, you know, we intend to have them in public, we tend, if at all possible, to have them at the Legislative Office Building because that's really where our stakeholders are and they should be able to see what's happening. The other thing we're doing is sent a monthly report of our operations. It's pretty much showing that we're making slow and steady progress. If you have any questions about that, feel free to ask now or at any time, just give me a call. Um, our next big project for the summer, well, first of all, we have two summer associates, two summer interns that we are delighted to have helping us out. Rusty Bovee and Grace Galy, um, and they have been a huge help. And have been helping both getting out things in enforcement and helping us with our next project. We are going to launch on a very series of regulations. And as we keep going through the list, the list gets longer, regulations we want to issue. And I want to hold off, and it's also been sent to you, and then I also will ask that it be added to the minutes. This is what the process looks like. It's, um, pretty complicated, um, of a process to get a regulation through in Connecticut. But we plan to start with, you know, the low-hanging fruit, updating our address, up, you know, correcting wrong statutory sites, setting up, you know, updating our rules of practice so that we have email service, et cetera. But we also intend to do the audits, ghost committees, CEP regs, e contributions. There's a long list of them. And one of the questions I have for you as commissioners is, I believe that the best point for you to be kind of us to present our regulations to you will be at the point where we're getting public comments and having one of you sit as a hearing officer because we will have written public comments as well as a public hearing, I think, for these regulations for the most part. I think updating the address, we probably don't need it, but I mean, obviously there'll be written comments, public comments for all of them. And whether we have a hearing is, is optional, but to the extent possible, we would like to have hearings. And we would assume that we would, we would give you guys first tips on serving as the hearing officers at those hearings. Obviously, if you want to designate myself or one of the staff, we can do that, but it seems that would be an appropriate use of your expertise. So that's something, once you get, we sent you this document, it is highly complicated. It's going to take us a while to go through. We're going to go through, I think, the easier ones first, just so that we get the system down. But then we plan to deal with some pretty substantive issues and which we were going to really need your input on. The other thing is, um, the, we had a meeting with Secretary of State and the Attorney General's Office, and we'll plan to have periodic, regular meetings to prep for any sort of thing that may come up at the elections. And I am open to questions, I mean, I could talk for a long time. Obviously, there's a Public Act twenty-five, twenty-six has passed. The House and the Senate, it is on the Governor's desk. The, um, both houses also, I mean, the Senate and the House also passed the budget and the implementer last night. So, you know, we are at the end of the legislative session today. It's been kind of a wild ride, but, you know, we have some stuff that we'd like to talk to you about later as a recommendation of counsel on how to proceed, particularly in implementation of these particular acts. And we would ask for an executive session and to discuss our draft proposals.
Any questions?
Open to questions.
Questions or comments for the interim executive director, yes. Commissioner Piatzou.
I just wanted to sort of remind folks that a few years ago, we had an instance in which regulations were drafted, albeit in response to a legislative act, and that horse got out of the barn without commissioners seeing language. So I think it's, or ought to have been self-evident that the regulations of the agency of the commission are for, and again, I'm not going to micromanage this process, but it's just self-evident that the authority to amend regulations rests with the commission by vote. And I just want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was not here for that process, so to the extent that someone could fill me in about at which point of this ridiculous chart you guys want to weigh in and how many times. I'm happy to have you weigh in early, often, whenever you wish, just let me know.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions or comments for the interim executive director? None appearing, we will move on with the next item on the agenda, which is the public session. First matter on that agenda is file number two thousand twenty-three dash one zero six. Attorney Smith, please.
Yes, thank you for the record, Attorney William Smith for the Commission. This matter and two thousand twenty-three, one oh six and two thousand twenty-three, one oh nine, which is its companion case, is a consent order with regard to the municipal PAC, which, based on filings and based on an attribution, there was a need to correct the attribution based on nine dash six twenty-one. And there was also a need to make a filing based on nine dash six oh eight. In the course of the investigation, it was determined that while there was originally a late filing based on receipt of the town clerk of a civil penalty of one hundred dollars, that matter was resolved further based on the work with the respondents and their understanding of nine dash six twenty-one. Their position was that they had satisfied nine dash six twenty-one in that their flyers that pertain to municipal election did in fact point out who their membership was. It also pointed out that they were registered with the town clerk. Nevertheless, nine dash six twenty-one and the elements of indicating paid for by, as well as the designated treasurer, has been explained to the respondents. At this time, this is a consent, a consent agreement, which has the respondent agreeing to comply with both nine dash six twenty-one and nine dash six oh eight. I have a draft before you, and I'm asking that this be adopted pending receipt of the original within ten days.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Piatzou.
I'm fine with the outcome, I just had a couple clarification questions. Paragraph ten. If I could orient you quickly, second line.
Right.
Says talked about as treasurer of the Thompson Republicans. In this case was out of East Granby, I understand that one of the candidate's last name may have been Thompson.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong.
Page three, bottom of page.
Yes. So, um, that, that is correct, that, that is a Scribner's error and that will be corrected. This treasurer was with regard to the East Granby Now PAC, correct?
Correct, and then in paragraph fifteen, page five, there's a first line, it's reference to a political slate committee. And I don't believe that this was a slate committee because I don't believe those who are involved were candidates.
Right.
Question is whether or not the word slate should come out.
I, I apologize for that error, it is a political committee.
Okay, thank you.
Those, those errors of mine will certainly be corrected for the final agreement.
Anyone else on this matter? Just out of curiosity, I was surprised to see an attorney signing as opposed to a direct respondent.
Right, so this has been going back and forth with Attorney Mario Sarami. And he was representing both the individuals. And they are elderly, his offices are here in Hartford, and his ability to move back and forth to, uh, the respondents were reduced based on their ability to get back and forth. So he offered that he would make the signature on behalf of his client.
Any other questions or comments for counsel? Right, none appearing, taking into consideration the minor edits that will be made with respect to file number two thousand twenty-three dash one zero six. It is the recommendation of counsel, the proposed consent order and agreement be approved by the commission and be subject to being executed on behalf of the respondents by their attorney within ten and returned to the commission within ten days. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Commissioner Lojello.
Second, Piatzou.
We've been seconded in any discussion. None appearing those in favor of the motion will raise their hands and or say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? None appearing the motion carries with four voting in favor and none opposed, no abstentions. Next item on the agenda is file number two thousand twenty-three dash one zero nine, Attorney Smith.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Attorney William Smith. Before you is file number two thousand twenty-four dash zero thirty-nine, which was the complaint by Anna Plaza and Bridgeport. In this instance, there were allegations with regard to respondent Margaret Joyce. And the allegations were with regard to the handling of an absentee ballot and absentee ballot applications prior to the February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four election. And basically, Ms. Joyce in this consent agreement does agree to the facts in terms of having distributed absentee ballots, strictly absentee ballot applications for compensation, which is prohibited. She also does admit to an instance of, um, having returned to one of the applicants and taken an absentee ballot. This is a, is an egregious matter that the commission historically takes quite seriously. And the penalty is of one thousand dollars. I would note that the individual in question is indigent in terms of our ability to prove that fact. We have had legal investigators in the field, and in the course of negotiating this settlement, the respondent had been housed at a section-eight hotel for the indigent. And in the course of the negotiations, she then lost that housing. And the legal investigator has confirmed that she is now living out of her car. And basically, they have agreed to meet at a public library to have this executed and to formalize any affidavit that she needs for the financial indigency. That said, both the investigator and myself are prepared to put an affidavit to the file based on the investigator's confirmation of the circumstances that I've described. I do ask that this matter be adopted today with the remittance of the civil penalty and pending receipt of the original within ten days.
Okay.
And if I may make an additional comment for the commissioners, we have also, I've also asked the investigator when he visits the respondent here to provide her with contacts and access to social services.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for counsel? All right, I have a concern I'd like to just put on the table. What is there in this process that would discourage candidates for the office of mayor of the city of Bridgeport from putting indigent people in this position over and over and over again?
The, the best way to do that, and I think that if I can give you some context, this complaint was made in, in a tranche of some thirty-plus complaints that were filed in a series of six to eight weeks with this commission. The former executive director at that time had focused on the participants in the absentee ballot part. So while we did have some nexus with various committees, when we were originally docketing and executing these cases, we focused on the people who had potentially committed fraud with the actual handling of the absentee ballots. I think that moving forward, it would absolutely be my recommendation that we necessarily make the treasurer of any candidate committee that employed this strategy a respondent. So for example, in this instance, had it not been in the historical context of the massive, uh, fraud and various cases that we had in Bridgeport, many of which that have resulted in criminal matters with the chief state's attorney, should we get an allegation that there is a specific violation of a committee paying an individual solely to administer absentee ballot applications? I would absolutely identify the candidate committee responsible for that and that treasurer and candidate would also be respondents. Again, based on where this complaint came in, 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 in a batch of about thirty, based on the executive director, the former exec director's strategy, we were focused on the participants who were actually on the ground knocking on doors. In this matter, the, the GANAM committee and treasurer were not identified as respondents.
All right, that seems like a reasonable response to my inquiry, however, that we name, name treasures of these campaigns as respondents in the future to discourage this kind of conduct.
I do.
Commissioner, Commissioner Piatzou.
My only observation is I understand that we traditionally may have handled this in that particular way, and that's fine. Of what we've seen particularly since COVID is a, in my view, proliferation of the use of absentee ballots, both by campaigns as well as changes in the law. I'm not going to weigh in on the policy considerations of that, but the point simply being for us as a commission, as an agency, is that the use of absentee ballots has grown. And so too has the ability of folks to be acting in concert and perhaps using the indigent as a way to perhaps escape liability. That's something that we're going to have to take a much closer look at going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? If not, then with respect to file number two thousand twenty-four dash zero three nine is the recommendation of counsel that the proposed consent order be adopted by the commission and it includes a henceforth order of one thousand dollar civil penalty, although the commissioners are aware of the fact that that is almost certainly going to be reduced by virtue of indigency. And the acceptance or adoption of this consent agreement is contingent upon its execution and receipt by the commission within ten days of today's date. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Commissioner Lojello.
Second, Piatzou.
It's moved and seconded in any discussion. None appearing those in favor of the motion will raise their hands and or say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? None appearing the motion is approved with four voting in favor and none opposed, no abstentions. Item number four on the agenda is file number two thousand twenty-four dash one three zero, Attorney Smith.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Attorney William Smith from, for the commission. This is in the matter of a complaint by Robert Sampson, file number two thousand twenty-four, one thirty, from Willcut. The allegation by Senator Sampson, who at the time of this complaint and at all relevant times was the incumbent senator, that his opponent in the election, Christopher Robertson, had made misleading and deceptive claims in the course of his campaign literature and rhetoric during the campaign. At all times, these candidates were both members of, participants in the citizens' election program. This findings and conclusions before you does substantially include both Senator Sampson's concerns and detailed description of why he believed these were deceptive or misleading claims. It also provides the opportunity to the respondent, Christopher Robertson, by providing his detailed explanation of the claims. In terms of the commission's position, because these allegations are limited to the truth or veracity of political speech, this is a findings and conclusions before you dismissing the matter based on longstanding commission precedent that the commission under Title Nine does not have the jurisdiction to evaluate or to regulate claims of the truth or veracity of campaign speech. And I would point out that this agreement, excuse me, this dismissal goes as far as providing precedent dating from nineteen eighty-six. And in nineteen eighty-six, the commission pointed out that it lacked a provision in the statutes or its regulations to regulate campaign speech. And more recently, in a case in two thousand twenty, it reaffirmed that by pointing out the limits of the inquiry where we get this type of allegation. So in other words, while we would certainly in this inquiry look to see if an attribution was included or accurate, we would not go to the extent of inquiring or trying to verify the accuracy of campaign speech. So on these narrow and specific circumstances, based on the determination or conclusion that the truth or veracity of campaign advertisements is not something that the commission has the judgment, excuse me, the jurisdiction to regulate, this is a dismissal.
All right, any questions or comments for counsel? Yes, Commissioner Piatzou.
Page five, um, all caps, bold order, and then says the following order is issued on the basis of the aforementioned findings. And it looks like there's a blank, we need to add the words, the matter is dismissed, I believe.
Yes, I had noticed that myself. Thank you.
I, I will have this matter as dismissed.
Uh, and my, my, my only comment is I concur that this is a longstanding precedent that's been applied both ways. To the extent that the commission in the past got into the business of regulating speech, Senator Sampson and former Senator Markley took us to court, that was before my time on a commission, and in my view, were ultimately vindicated, which only reinforces this precedent that we are not going to get into regulating the content of speech. So kudos to Senator Sampson and Senator Markley for vindicating their First Amendment rights at the Supreme Court. Obviously, our decision today is consistent, I think, with the First Amendment points that they were making in that case.
Okay, any other questions or comments? None appearing with respect to file number two thousand twenty-four dash one three zero. It is the recommendation of counsel based on his findings and conclusions that the complaint in this matter be dismissed, and we will so note before we provide it for signature by the chairman. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Commissioner Lojello.
Second, Piatzou.
We've been seconded in any discussion. And appearing those in favor of adoption of the dismissal of the complaint will raise their hands and or say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? None appearing the motion carries with four voting in favor and none opposed, no abstentions. Item five on the agenda is file number two thousand twenty-four dash zero nine zero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Attorney William Smith for the commission. This matter before you is a complaint of Brian D. Meek of Norwalk in file number two thousand twenty-four dash zero ninety. The gravamen of the complaint is that because Senator Duff was a participant in the, the CEP, therefore, he violated the CEP because there was an ongoing political committee of two or more individuals that made expenditures and reimbursements of Senator Duff with, with regard to, um, various activities, including meetings of legislative, uh, bodies, the State Legislative Leaders Foundation, the National Conference of State Legislatures, the New York Interstate Legislature meeting, and a Juneteenth, uh, meeting or activity. However, based on the investigation, if you look at the events that were allegedly, uh, violative because you can't receive any other sources when you're a CEP. when you're a CEP participant to support your candidacy, there was no overlap or indication that any of these four events either promoted his candidacy or opposed that of his opponent. Moreover, under 9-607, the commission can find that these very specific reimbursements for this type of activity are permissible expenditures by a pack of two or more individuals. And so the findings and conclusions before you articulates the facts and then dismisses this matter. I would ask for its adoption.
Any questions or comments for counsel? None appearing with respect to file number 2024-090. It is the recommendation of counsel based on his findings and conclusions that the complaint in the matter be dismissed. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Commissioner Jello.
Second Pietzow.
We've been seconded, any discussion? None appearing those in favor of the motion will raise their hands and or say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? None appearing the motion carries with four voting in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. Item six on the agenda is file number 2024-037, Attorney Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. In a matter of a complaint by Benjamin A. Good Diamond. Getman. My apologies for the mispronunciation. See file 2024-037. Before the commission's findings and conclusions, the complaint alleges that the Plainfield Republican Town Committee made an impermissible expenditure or a coordinated expenditure or impermissible solicitation by sending an Anadoc contribution link for State Representative Francis Cooley and sharing an Anadoc contribution link in allegedly a flyer for State Senator Henry Martin to the Plainfield Republican Town Committee's followers on Facebook. The respondents in this matter are Gail Dennehy, who is the chairperson of the Plainfield Republican Town Committee, as well as Glenn Pitt, who is the treasurer for the Plainfield Republican Town Committee. The crux of all of this is that General Statute 9-601, parent 25, parent capital A, does not allow a town committee, which is a party committee by definition, to make an expenditure for a communication that is a solicitation for on the behalf of a candidate committee. I think it's interesting to note what the legislative landscape is at the current time. Senate Bill 1405 for session year 2025 has passed both the House and the Senate, and it would allow the conduct at issue here. And it's also important to note at this date that bill remains unsigned by the governor. But more importantly, in this particular case, based on the evidence that was gathered, I think there's a lack of evidence that supports coronation between the committee and the individual candidates committees that issue in this particular complaint. Moreover, due to the efforts of the reelect Senator Harry Martin 2024 and a committee in the Cooley for Connecticut 2024 candidate committee that made great efforts towards the elimination of any contributions that originated from a solicitation by a town committee before qualifying for a CEP grant that was done through the validation process. Additionally, in this case, the Plainfield Republican Town Committee has filed a statement. That statement acknowledges the actions of the town committee towards providing those online solicitations to sharing of contributions as well as their commitment to cease that activity under the current law. I think both of those efforts are sufficient, and that this matter may be dismissed. And it's a recommendation of counsel that the commission adopt this agreement. Counsel will raise that. I just, I think there's a scripener error in paragraph 14. I think there should be a comma after May 20 of 2024 instead of a period. But with that correction, again, this is a recommendation of counsel that commission adopt this agreement.
Any questions or comments for counsel? Yes, Commissioner Pietzow.
So paragraph 14, yeah, should be a comma, but it should also say 2025, not 2024.
Oh. I want to look.
Maybe that got caught between when the packet went out and what you have. But there's the year was off there.
I had looked on the, not just about the website, it said 24, but I'll change it to 24.
No, 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 it says 24. It needs to be 25, May 20th, and it should read 2025.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Oh.
All right, so don't worry about the 2425 because I'm about to apologize to you because I think you were right. I changed my glasses, and I think it is Getman. So any questions or comments for counsel with respect to this matter? None appearing with respect to file number 2024-037 is the recommendation of counsel based on his findings and conclusions that the complaint in the matter should be dismissed. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Commissioner Jello.
Second Pietzow.
We've been seconded, any discussion? None appearing those in favor of the motion to dismiss will raise their hands and or say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? None appearing the motion carries with four voting in favor and none opposed, no abstentions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I believe that we could go back before we leave enforcement matters. When we voted, we never voted on number two. Now, number one and two were actually the same document, but I believe you only called the vote for 2023-106, and you did not call the vote for 2023-109.
Okay.
And they're basically the same document, and they were presented. But you only asked for the, you only asked for a vote for the first, not the second.
Yeah, were they, I think they were presented jointly, but I, we didn't have.
Yes, I, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. The interim director is absolutely correct. These matters came in at the same time, one by a referral by an election official, the other by a complaint from the public. They were identical in terms of an overlapping issue. They were investigated together and brought together, and the single document identifies both file numbers. I apologize for that, but I would also ask that file number 2023-109 be adopted pending receipt of the original within 10 days.
Any questions or comments for counsel? None appearing the, with respect to file number 2023-109 is the recommendation of counsel that the proposed consent order be adopted, provided that it be signed and returned to the commission within 10 days. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Commissioner Jello.
Second Pietzow.
We've been seconded, any discussion? None appearing those in favor of the motion will raise their hands and or say aye.
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 Motion carries with four voting in favor and none opposed, no abstentions. Thank you, Madam Interim Director, for seeing that. All right, we're now up to audit reports. And that would be Director Munir, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. Solomon Munir, Director of Audit and Disclosure. I have total nine draft reports today, two from 2022 post-elections and seven from 2024 post-elections. So number one is Fernand for Fairfield. Number two, reelect Senator Henry Martin. Number three, Jason Bennett for CT 2024. Number four, Charma 2024. Number five, Longo for State Rep. Number six, Maestro Francisco for CT 2024. Number seven, McGoyty 2024. Number eight, Rutic Liano for Trumbull. And number nine, TZ 2024. I'm requesting the commission to make these reports final.
All right, thank you. With respect to the nine campaigns who were just, that were just identified in the record by Director Munir, is there a motion to make final the reports for each of those?
So moved, Commissioner Jello.
Second Pietzow.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? None appearing those in favor of the motion to make final the audits of those nine campaigns will raise their hands and or say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? None appearing the motion carries with four voting in favor and none opposed, no abstentions. And if you will just give me a moment, we will attempt to deal with the next matter. All right, so at this point, Chair is prepared to entertain a motion to add to the agenda and executive session, and go, add to the agenda going into an executive session for general statutes 1-200, ren six, ren E, and 1-210, ren B, ren 10, to discuss a recommendation of counsel rate draft legislation and legal issues as it raises. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Commissioner Jello.
Second Pietzow.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion? None appearing those in favor of the motion will raise their hands and or say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? And then appearing the motion carries, and we will go into executive session at this time.
That vote was to both amend the agenda and to go into executive session. I don't mean to be picky.
Well, then let's, then the chair will entertain a motion.